Well, you need to be able to do it for, uh, go on your computer.
Yeah, you should have a new word.
You're running.
Rockman.
President.
Mr. Brooks. Mr. Duran Harris.
Here.
Ms. Keefe.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Mr. Lou. Ms. Rubin.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Here. We have a call. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Thursday, June 11, 2020, in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the Board Office, Old George's Road, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune Sentinel and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly elected Board members.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have, um, we do have the two presentations tonight. I, the second one will be the Restart Recovery Plan, which I don't think anybody cares about. I think everyone wants to know about the student safety data report as it compares, as we're required to report with that. I'll turn it over to Mr. Patella. Mr. Patella, you can unmute yourself. I saw him on here.
Yes, I am here.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Zakowski, if you can scroll down to page fourteen. That is where the.
I wanted everyone to know, I do have coverage for my scrolling finger for medical coverage. Anything else you want? Uncovered. Okay, fourteen, here you go.
Okay, so as everyone looks at the chart, it certainly is pretty self-explanatory. This is reporting period two, um, for, from January one to June thirtieth. And I just wanted to point out a couple of highlights. Um, first of all, we had, if you could read on the bottom, we had thirteen HIV cases, of which four were confirmed under, uh, as HIB cases. Through thirteen investigations, only four were HIB cases. If you look at the chart and the HIB cases also go with this, we, it's skewed somewhat by COVID-19. We, we left mid-March, and so the numbers reflect about a third of what the previous year's numbers were. And however, if you look at the last two, HIV training and HIV programs, we, we accomplished more than half. Um, we, we try and get our training and our pro, programs completed earlier in the year to educate everybody. And Dr. Zakowski, if you would scroll down a little bit, um, the numbers, by the way, for over six thousand students that go through our hallways and doors each day, I think reflect a pretty good job by all stakeholders, students, staff, and parents. And so I just want to point out a, a couple of things. Number one, as you can try, as you can see, we try to, try to provide training to all of our stakeholders to educate and help. And so I know for, uh, for parents, we have our, uh, PTO meetings, our, our anti-bullying specialists present there. We, um, definitely speak to students inside the classroom. Our, um, guidance counselors reach our students, and we reach our teachers and administrators during faculty meetings and staff. And so we really want to educate everybody in order, and what are we looking for? We're looking for positive behavior. As Dr. Zakowski's scrolling, um, you can see all of our programs, um, we have numerous programs throughout the school, throughout the year, to promote positive behavior. Because we feel if positive behavior is number one, that's going to cut down on our bullying. So as the Anti-Bullying Coordinator for our district, I think all of our stakeholders are pitching in and doing a great job, and I think our numbers reflect that. And, um, Dr. Zakowski, that would, um, finish my presentation.
Well, just one thing, uh, Mr. Patella, uh, so we know people, just someone texts me with a keen eye. If you look at the chart I'm showing, reporting period two, we want to make sure we know the typo, six thirty, thirty nineteen. I think it was six thirty twenty nineteen. I want to take a leap of faith that that's just a typo, uh, in there. And, uh, this gives me a great, I don't know who did it, but it's certainly just a typo. We'll correct it. It should reflect six thirty twenty nineteen, and it says, I think it says thirty nineteen, yes, so no big. But, uh, just so you know, Mr. Patella, I didn't catch that. It was caught by, uh, one of our viewers, so who have a good editorial viewer. So thank you, and we'll make sure the record reflects this twenty nineteen. We like to compare the apples from the period to the oranges, I mean, apples to apples, not to the oranges. So thank you, Mr. Patella. Any questions? By the Board members for Mr. Patella? Seeing no questions, no, no virtual or real questions. Our next, you can see on the agenda, here, I just want to go through the steps. What we're going to do is, uh, discuss the Restart Recovery Plan. We call a destination return to school. And then after we do that, we're going to have a public session on that, just on the reopening plan that's presented now. So while we're going through the presentations, I would ask your viewers, if any, or our Board members, write a question down. Uh, so we then, when we get done, we'll certainly turn to the Board if they have any questions, and then we'll go to number six, which is the public session. And then after we get done taking questions, um, we will then go into, we'll close it and continue with the rest of our meeting. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing, and I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Roca, who I unwillingly shared the co-host responsibilities, took over half the power and gave it to Ms. Roca to put on. Uh, she's been working as part of our committee, putting all the slides together regarding our reopening plan. While we're waiting for Ms. Roca, I do want to say thank you to more than thirty of our stakeholders, our staff members, our administrators, parents, our, um, administration, our Board members. We had four Board members sit on the various subcommittees and really go through it, start validating some of our thoughts, asking the tough questions. And the, the most frustrating part about this was not working with the people. We had such excellent, uh, really focused, uh, stakeholders. The frustrating part was we didn't have a magic wand to make sure every question was answered in detail. And, uh, because we've been moving with a fluid, uh, guidelines. So why I'm saying that, I do want to say thank you to everyone. I do want to get going with this so we can release it, but I also still have some housekeeping items. Uh, many people have texted me over the weeks, although I was on a broadcast every morning with the mayor, I was getting texts like, how come Cranford or other public schools, three weeks ago, they released the plan? Well, I'm happy to report, or that we didn't release it that early. We waited for our stakeholder groups to really look at it, wait for the guidelines to kind of get a little more focused. Because many of the districts had to, whoever just came on, thank you. Uh, many of those districts had to rewrite their plans or adjust their plans, and people are very upset because they said, you said this, and now you're changing it. It's not really the district's fault, the change is happening as the bouncing ball is moving. And we recently heard, um, from, I'll name the district, Jersey City, they said we're going to have all remote. Well, the governor answered in his press conference that, uh, that is not exactly the directive. The directive was, he said, all districts must have a plan in place to include in-person schooling. But he also, after a letter from two hundred superintendents, said, we must allow parents to choose. They can choose for all, if they want to be in remote world. So what you're going to see is a hybrid model of allowing children to come back to school, and also an all-remote model, our two worlds. So as you can see, whatever way the governor decides, I also want to mention, there's a legislative bill from the Assembly Education Committee, sponsored by Myla, J.C., and a few other, uh, folks on the, uh, Education Committee, saying that school cannot start. Anything but full remote, except for special ed and special groups. They have a bill moving along the Assembly. So that you can see the state of flux that we're in in New Jersey. Philadelphia, big school district, just announced all virtual because of data points. So the question is why? The answer is very careful, very simple, safety and security of our students and staff and families. We're going to do the best we can. We're going to make sure we follow all the protocols, and you're going to see a plan that addresses those issues. But school districts have made decisions like Philadelphia because they are able to. Philadelphia was not confined to a governor's directive. We are answering the governor's directive. We work with our stakeholders, we've been working with our administrators, we've been working with moving targets, looking at the data every day. Myself and this cabinet of the North Brunswick Central Office Administration Team, including our principals, we've been working with our colleagues in different schools. We met three times with our neighbors in East Brunswick, South Brunswick, New Brunswick, and North Brunswick to collaborate. In addition, we met with county district four times, with every school district in the county, working with our DOE about plans, what's acceptable and not acceptable. So we're going to get started. So I just wanted everyone to know, the reason why Jersey City did what they did, and Willingboro, which is the other district, they're not compliant with the governor's directive. We are in compliance with the governor's directive to submit this plan. If the Board approves, and all of the stakeholders, we'll get a chance to take a look at this as we will put it back out there. And then I'll talk about next steps as we're going to look at it at the school level and have our principals do community meetings so we can get into the details and logistics. Because we have so many different schools and so many different areas that, uh, one plan is giving the framework. So this framework, we're about to start. So with that, um, I have no control over this. Ms. Roca, can you move this slide? And so we have the quote, districts must plan, must account for resuming in-person instruction. All plans will be preliminary and still need county approval. Many areas are still in the detailed planning stages. What do we mean by detailed planning? We know that we're going to have transportation. We know we're going to do some, uh, thermal checks on our students and staff. How we move them in exactly, we'll be working with the principals to get the exact answers so parents can see how that occurs in each of the different schools. Okay? We're going to put prior, we prioritize the physical, social, emotional health of our staff and students. That has been the number one area that we feel was lost during the immediacy of the March twelfth to remote learning. The emotional health, the social, physical, the disconnect. We are organizations that bring students and staff together for, since in education, thirty-six years, we've tried to maximize the spaces to make sure students are always with adults. And adults always have an opportunity to make a difference with students in teaching. We're not isolated. This is a new world we're living in. So there's been an, uh, effect. How do we know there's been an impact? We've been working with families all throughout the, uh, COVID-19, uh, remote directive from March. Our nurse supervisor led by Ms. Mary Ann, Mary Ellen Engel, she had a virtual nurses' office. And our nurses worked and continue to work with families that have been giving us feedback about the social, emotional health and moving forward. We're going to follow social distancing to the greatest extent possible. PPE guidelines in all facilities, including mandatory wearing of mask. I know many of you are going to say, how are you expecting to wear masks all times? Yes, that will be the way we meet our social distance criteria. Deliver meaningful instruction in person and remotely for maximum academic progress. That is the major goal. How do we create both platforms to maximize? One of our Board members challenged us during the March and April, May, and said, we're doing a decent job, uh, stopping on the dime, but if we have to go back to remote in September, we better get better. And I'm here to tell the Board members, I'm here to tell, uh, our public, we are getting better. We, if we could just focus on remote, we would be even better. But we're going to focus on both platforms because we still have to offer instruction, uh, in-person instruction. And maybe that will change, maybe that will change, but I just want the residents to know, our stakeholders to know, that we're going to do our focus, our best focus on both platforms. And of course, we have all students equipped with a working device, internet connectivity, that equity and access has not been compromised. In fact, we have laid out a plan as we do everything incrementally, from our roofwork to our construction, capital projects, our instructional goals. We equipped our students incrementally. So now, when many districts, what, you wonder where the money went, and they need help from the state, we've been able to continue to make sure everyone has a working device and internet connectivity. We had re, I mentioned earlier, we had subcommittees, our reentry subcommittees have been working during the weeks. We asked them for a quick turnover, collaboratively look at the, um, issues, the guidelines, the protocols, and the challenges. I'm happy to report that continued to happen, and I want to thank the subcommittees once again. And we help us develop our destination return to school. Do I have, okay. So our facility, let's start off with our facilities. I'm going to thank, again, our current staff, our current, um, custodians, maintenance, working with our nursing, our health providers, to make sure what we have, what we're doing, that not only we're cleaning, we're following the exa, exact protocols from the CDC and the Department of Health. We know what to wipe, what to order, how we ordered it. We, how to order it, not only, uh, effectively, but efficiently, so we look at the best prices, the best, uh, costs, so we can maximize a very tight budget as we are building two platforms. And one of the platforms can, contains, uh, considers going back to school with our facilities. And how do we make sure HVAC will run with maximum fresh air capacity? Many districts, and I, there's some of our neighbors that don't have HVAC systems and fresh airflow in all of their classrooms. We do. We incrementally took care of that. We incrementally been trying to improve that with not going out to referenda. We did it through our ESIP project, as you know, through energy savings, our solar project, updating our HVAC systems. It couldn't come at a better time. Health and wellness, whoop. Trigger finger. So it's a two-step process. I'm going to stop here, catch my breath. I'm going to ask our supervisor of nursing, Ms. Eric, Mary Ellen Engel, to take over a little bit, um, and talk a little bit about our two-step process, health and wellness, overall, non-negotiable, um, platform.
Thank you, Dr. Zakowski. Right now, uh, we, the district is using the Qualtrex system to build a survey, uh, for staff and students. The survey is being used right now for all staff that are entering buildings to screen for any possible symptoms related to COVID-19 or potential, uh, exposure. And if they, um, based on how they answer the, the survey, they are directed that they can either safely enter the building or that they are not allowed to enter the building. And then what happens is there's a dashboard for all of these entrance, uh, entrances of the day. And the key staff can look to make sure that, uh, the staff has completed the survey appropriately, and that we then, uh, the health, whoever's in charge, it would be me over the summer, does follow up on the individuals that completed the surveys, and they were not allowed in school, to follow up on, on whether or not they need support to manage whatever symptoms they're having. Uh, we are now in the process of working on, uh, a survey for staff, I'm sorry, for parents to complete, to look at every single day, to review the symptoms that may be possible, um, related, may be related to COVID, and also any kind of, um, if they were exposed in any way. And if they were, they will notify the school nurse, and the school nurse will then follow up. But these are, um, two screenings that will, for staff and for students before they even leave their home. Then, when they arrive to school, we'll be using, um, scanning with a thermal scanner, uh, at the buildings and thermometers to also, as a second, um, screening, to make sure that we are, uh, uh, not allowing students or staff into the building that, uh, may be fabrile or may be getting symptoms, and, and, you know, we don't know about that yet. And this would be another managing, whether or not, um, you know, to make sure that we're allowing students and staff to enter the building safely. Again, these are all mitigation, uh, strategies, so that in addition to washing our hands and social distancing and wearing masks, so that we can decrease the chance and the spread of the COVID-19.
Ms. Engel, you wanted to discuss, um, going back to adding the mental health training and for students.
So one of the important things that, uh, we discussed in our subcommittee was the importance of the social, emotional learning and, um, supporting staff and students as we prepared to re-enter, um, schools. And the group, uh, presented a number of, um, strategies and plans and professional development for staff, so that, uh, that would actually be completed before beginning school. And also, also making sure that people are aware of all of the services and supports that are within the, the district right now, so that people know that if they do need help, they do need support, where immediately they should be going. We also have access through our virtual health office. Any parent or any staff member that has a concern can file a form, and then we immediately reach out to them through the virtual health office. So that's another way. But again, I think that one of the most important things that our subcommittee, uh, discussed was the importance of the social, emotional learning, um, and the ability for all, uh, our community to understand what our supports are as we begin reentry. And even if we continue in our distance learning, we still need to, just as important to support the social, emotional, uh, uh, aspect of our students and our staff.
Thank you. So obviously, you, if you want to continue, we just.
Sure.
You have to make sure that as we lay out this plan and some of the discussion points, it's, it's going to be very important that, uh, staff and students do not come if they're exhibiting COVID-19 si, symptoms.
Right. And one of the most important things that we really need to, um, emphasize is that we must communicate with our school community, the staff, the parents, the students, so that they understand what is school going to look like when we do begin school back in, in our buildings? And what are the things that you need to know to keep yourself safe? And reinforcing that we're going to be, um, wearing masks. And the expectation is that the, the moment that students arrive on the bus stop, that they will have a mask on, that they will wear a mask during the day when they arrive at school, if they're walkers, that they'll have their mask on. And to be aware, what does six feet, feet look like? And parents can do that. They can show, they can practice wearing a mask, so they can practice, um, practicing safe distancing. They can really reinforce the hand washing and making sure that all those habits are really well-practiced before school begins. That's a very key area. Uh, when we, when we talk about, uh, really decreasing the, the chances of, of spreading of this virus, the most important thing is that people are educated and understand that everyone has an important part, so that everyone has confidence in our community, that we're all doing everything we can to mitigate the spread of the, of COVID-19.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And I just want to make sure we reemphasize, before you go ahead, uh, Ms. Roca, we do have to emphasize that, uh, we work together, uh, and that we have been working through this, creating forms, what it looks like. And you've been reading, as I've been reading, the CDC and then the Association of Pediatrics, pediatricians, uh, saying that it should only be three feet, it should be six feet. So when you see and hear tonight that what does it look like? We are following up this meeting with other school meetings, community, uh, school community meetings. We've asked our principals to start working in the details, what it really would look like. Because I can't, we cannot show every school now, and we don't have some of the exact details, because we're going to ask parents and families, by the end of this week, we're sending, by Friday, another survey. A survey that will say, are you looking at our plan? Do you intend to send your child to school or, uh, in a hybrid model? Or will your child be remote, um, learning all the time, a hundred percent? And then we say, we know, we're asking to make that commitment. If we start in September, you make that commitment till November on that remote side. So we can make plans and we can set up what it looks like, and how many folks, how many students will be going into classrooms, and what the teaching, uh, load would look like, and how we will rotate the hybrid model and the remote model. More to come on that, but I want to make sure it's so important, when you get this next survey, that we get good feedback and a good return rate, much like the return rate we receive when we first. much like the return rate we receive when we first send out some suggestions to our, our community about possible schedules. And we really appreciate the response rate on that as well.
There's just one more thing I'd like to reemphasize is that the importance that everyone in our school community has to do their part. We cannot come to work, we cannot come to school if we are sick. If there's even a question of whether or not we're not feeling well or there's one symptom, we don't, we're not trying, we're really encouraging people to understand that this is not the time to tough it out. This is the time to really be protective and careful and very intentional and review every day your child's symptoms and how they're feeling and follow the guidelines from the survey and report the information that you have so that we can keep our entire community safe and we can continue to, to learn to the best of our ability. And without, without that community understanding and really educating everyone of the importance of all of each person's responsibility towards each other's health, we, we can be successful. So that, that is my, my big message is that we have to really work together and take care of each other.
Thank you, Ms. Engel. And, and we're going to go to transportation because that was a non-negotiable for our Board of Education. Because we cannot provide, expect every family member to provide transportation. Transportation was, is an equity issue, which means fairness. And we want to be fair to all those students. We never would, that would be the last thing we would have to remove from our local district is the transportation. So the buses will run on regular schedule. We are going to reduce the capacity. Obviously, you'll see our schedule, it talks about reducing the capacity in the classrooms, which will reduce the capacity of what we can, how we can transport our children. Now, parents, I know, being a parent, a father of six children, only one left in school. She'll be a senior next year in high school. I always kind of made it tough, the drudgery of filling out all the forms in the beginning of the year, like, oh my God, we got so much to do. Well, this drudgery is going to be exponential. Because we need cooperation with a focus on safety on a daily basis. We need parents to complete the daily exposure symptom survey. Your child will, if you're coming to school, you'll see in a little bit, will not be coming every day. Some children will, but not all children. Only the children that qualify for our special services will be every day. However, we do ask everyone to make sure that when your child is scheduled to be on a bus or in a classroom, they do the online daily symptom survey before boarding that bus and going into the class, into the school. Drivers and aides and students while on the bus will be required to wear a mask. Buses will be disinfected between runs. Parents will be encouraged to transport. We're asking, I know as a parent, if I had a choice, if I could help it, I would transport my own child to reduce the bus capacity. And as you know, we're trying to spread out our children as best we can. And it's acceptable according to the state requirements that if you cannot completely have social distancing of six feet, that each child wears a mask. We are, our guidelines, and Mr. Keener's been working on, providing for that six feet on each of our buses. But our 54 passenger buses, that's going to severely reduce the amount of students that can get on that 54 passenger. Likewise, with the 25 passenger buses that we use, smaller buses. Parent transportation waivers are being sent out as I speak. What are those? Waiver, if you have, you are able to receive transportation, if you qualify and eligible, you can say, we want to know, I'm not sending my child on that bus. That will help us with our scheduling. That's it. It will help us, it will help the district. We want to know. And the reason why we're saying that is we want to have a record of it. Because as you know, we are, we bus more than 5,000 students a day. So we have to make significant plans. But what this, this committee, our subcommittees and our board is our focus on providing transportation to the extent that we can. We're having a very difficult decision with our non, students that do not come to our schools, that they go to the parochial or non-public schools. We are not able to provide transportation. We'll be giving aid and loo. But we're going to work as we see when this, all this falls out. We've always made a commitment to our, our, our non-public and our parochial partners. And I call them partners because they're our children. But we have to make sure we have enough buses and drivers for our in-district routes. And then we will do the best we can. But right now, we have to make a decision by August 1st for our non-public and parochial routes. And right now, we're going to be paying aid and loo for those routes. That information's coming out. I wanted everyone to hear it and the commitment from our board, our commitment from superintendent is those partners and non-public and parochial will do everything we can. But we have to make a decision by August 1st. And the decision right now is, not knowing the amount of drivers and the number of buses, we have to pay aid and loo right now. So that's where we are. Provisions will be made for flexibility. Parents will be asked to commit at least through November, just like if you want to go remote. We, we, there's no way we could ever honor a daily change. As you know, we're very prescriptive in our busing and our routes. And we can't plan to keep socially distanced and everyone organized and appropriately socially distanced on a bus if we don't know who's coming and is there different changes on a daily basis? Yes. Very quickly, I'll move through the policy and the procedures. We, we, we had to take a look at policies. The board will be memorializing many of the issues that are going on. We're talking about today. So we set up protocols and policies and funding. Subcommittee looked at those protocols. We are also making sure each school is preparing for isolation areas, which is going to, going to be a protocol. What's an isolation area? If we do symptom checking before you walk into our schools and a child happens to be above 100 degrees in their temperature, we have to bring them to an isolation area. It's the only way, I know it sounds horrible, but it's the only way we can continue to educate children in person safely. Procedure for implementation of remote learning with limited notice due to another school closure and in process. So what does that mean? Well, what happens if the state department, I mean, our local health department, our nursing services, our state department says you have a contact tracing of multiple children, multiple staff members in a school, you have to go to complete remote learning. Well, we're going to, that doesn't mean the district has to completely close down. We may have to make that choice based on the contact tracing issues. However, right now, our plans call for school closures and, and what to do with the other schools in, in the process of, if we have to close one school, not every school. The district is developing a dedicated webpage, all of this return to school information. All of this will be on the webpage by August 3rd. Why August 3rd? Because we're, the board approves tonight. Hopefully accepts this submission to the county. And the county then gives us their answer after August 3rd. Believe me, we won't get a quick turnaround. But I had a meeting with the county superintendent. We have a great county superintendent, Mr. Anderson, Kyle Anderson. And he said, he's waiting for guidelines, even more guidelines from the governor for our remote learning. But do not wait to submit your plans for the exact guidelines so you can make changes even if after you submit your plans and they're approved or they're, you know, they could be modified and checked. But we want our public, our, our parents, our residents to know that there'll be a destination return to school and all of any changes, all the updated information will continue to be there for all of you. What, again, our continuity of learning, this is the most important issue. We are so worried about the issues of chasing down the logistics. What do I mean by logistics? Chasing down, making sure people get, they have their temperatures, logistics of masks, logistics of isolation rooms, logistics of grab and go breakfasts and lunches. And we almost, we have to be reminded, it's about learning. We are learning institutions. So our continuity of learning really is generating this. But we said the platforms have to make sure they're grounded in safety and security. So again, we're following the guidelines in person. Detail instructional scheduling and other pertinent information for return to school, we've said during the month of August. Well, you're going to see some of it tonight. But the details, what it looks like, school by school will be, continue to be updated and continue to be sent out through the month of August. Our student services department continues examining scheduling options for special populations, unique learning needs. There may be more in-person instructions required. In fact, the Assembly Bill accounts for that, for the children with unique learning needs. We, we can never, and we will never compromise our, our students with needs, all students with needs, but especially those who need special care, that we will make sure that we do all that we can to keep our staff safe, our students safe. But certainly, we may have a, a different type of schedule to meet that, those needs. Lunch, continuity of learning, breakfast and lunch grab and goes will be available to all students. An emphasis placed on notification, those qualified for the federal program. We have many students that qualify for federal program. So we will give out more details, but we are planning on breakfast and lunch availability for all students that come in person. Now, if you're selecting remote and you qualify, we will set up programs, much like we're doing now, grab and goes at remote sites. All meals transaction, just while will be cash, cash, cashless. ID cards with bar codes, of course, that's part of our normal protocol. And payments will be made online or mailed in. Typical, nothing majorly different from that. I'm going to stop again, catch my breath. We're going to introduce, I think people want to see this. So with this infographic, I'm going to turn it to our Director of Curriculum. As all the groups did a lot of work, this came from a lot of thinking. It came from working with other districts, came from working with our subgroups, working with our central office, our principals. So with that, working with our chair, Ms. Rumbo, who chaired, and we've been working with Ms. Roca. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Roca and Ms. Rumbo about our program, what instructional day looks like in person, seats and virtual meets. So.
Thank you, Dr. Z. So this is a visual that hopefully makes it a little easier for you to get an idea of what we're looking at across the district. And as Dr. Z said, we're talking about what we're calling meets and seats. So a seat is an in-person seat in a chair in this, in school in person. And meets refers to the Google meets program that we use for students to visually. It's not Zoom, we don't have Zoom for all of our students. We have Google meets. So if they're virtual, they're on meets. So we call it seats and meets. So the program goes Monday through Friday. We're talking about a modified instructional day, which we'll go into in more detail later. But we're looking at in-person seats. We're going to divide our students into blue and gold groups across all grade levels. And it'll depend obviously on different parameters. But the idea is to reduce the, the number of students physically in the building by a certain percentage. And then we will be able to have fewer students in the building at one time.
Let me stop you there, Ms. Roca. The certain percentage wise, not, we don't say 50% because we don't know how many folks, we, we, our initial survey said about a third of our parents are not sending their children. Now that it's legal to take on a full remote option, we want to send out that survey again to parents. So the percentage will be based on that. But you can understand, we're going to split that up to make sure we meet the social distancing. I just wanted to make that point clear.
Yep, very good. So on Mondays and Tuesdays, the blue group would be in person in seats. At the same time, the students who would be in the gold group would be on their Google meets. And at the same time, we would have our virtual group on their meets as well. And then on Wednesday, all students would be on virtual meets for student, for virtual classes. And that would be a deep cleaning day. And on Thursday and Friday, we would flip the in-person students. Thursday and Friday, the gold group would be in person with their teachers. And on the same time, their blue group in that class would be on meets. And the virtual part of that class would be on meets. So we have gone back and forth on, in many different versions of this. But I think we finally hit on what we think will, will be the best version of it, the best way to move forward to have that content work. And looking at that, the virtual, the in-person seats and the virtual meets groups, they're all still groups in the same classrooms or within the same teachers. And so they'll have shared content. So everyone, whether they're in person, they're getting the full attention of their teachers and they're not getting left behind. You want to leave, there's more details on further slides, but that's the basics of, of our plan. Do you want to say anything else about that, Dr. Z?
Just, go ahead, Ms. Rumbo.
What I was just going to add to that, as Ms. Roca said, what this also allows, again, as mentioned previously, that pivot, that flip at any time, that if we had to go full 100% remote instruction, that this, that this would help allow for that as well.
You read my mind. And, and so there's talk about that, that Assembly Bill, school districts, states. We have so many states that are quarantined, that come into New Jersey. We still, we're going to work with our wonderful staff. You know, there's another component, we'll be working with our staff about availability. But this will allow us to have flexibility with our staff to teach all virtual, to teach in pair, instructional pairs. We're working in those details. But I hope you, the folks seeing this first time, look at it as green means virtual, blue and gold are the split percentages to reduce the number of children in that modified day, which we're going to now talk about. Maybe get into the schedule, is that the next slide, I believe? Yes, so continue, Ms. Roca, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, my graphics were taking a minute to pop in.
And I want everybody to know, I didn't draw this by hand. This was, just in case anybody thought that.
All right. So as we were talking about seats and meets, this is for grades K to four and pre-K programs may vary due to some of the required state guidelines, but, but we'll be following some of these as well. So what we're talking about for K to four is as our earliest learners, it's very important that, that if they're virtual, they're not getting left behind. We know it's very difficult for parents who are home, if they're working or even just being home with their children, how to support their children in their online learning. And so if the teacher is in school and is social distancing here with their mask on, I hope you all realize those are masks. And the teacher is in front of their smartboard here. And here are these socially distanced students in the classroom. And because they're the gold group this week, this is their, this must be Thursday or Friday. And they are in person, in their seats with their teacher. And what we've done is we, we've paired that teacher with another teacher for that homeroom. And it may be more students in a typical homeroom. What we have typically, what we started to do last year in some of our elementary schools was do focused pairs, where two teachers shared 40 students or two classrooms. And one teacher would teach the reading and sign, reading in certain subjects. And the other teacher would focus on teaching math twice. So we did that last year. And what we're thinking about is that we would have two teachers in charge of this group of students who are virtual and in person, the blue, gold and green group. And those two teachers would share the responsibility. So when the teacher is in person teaching the gold group, you have another teacher who may be somebody who has to work virtually from home or that teacher may also be at school, teaching remotely. But they're teaching remotely, the blue group and the green group at the same time that the teacher is in person. So we have two teachers in charge of those students. They're able to collaborate on their, on their lesson planning and, and focus really closely on what the students' needs are. And based on, you know, the structure of the day, how they're doing small groups. The Wednesday, they would all meet together and bring the whole class together in a session. And they could do that during the week if they wanted to as well for certain lessons. So it'll give us the opportunity to, to go back and forth and bring those groups together and make it, you know, move the curriculum forward. In the upper grades, oops, sorry, I went too far. In seats and meets for grades five through 12, starting, again, remember, we're, we're having a new structure of our, our schools this year. Our fourth grades are going to be the upper grade in our elementary schools. And our fifth and sixth will be at Linwood. Our seventh and eighth will be at NBTMS, our new building. And our nine through 12 will continue at high school. So this will be a similar version with one teacher here with your gold group in the seats. The blue group meets virtual. And then the all meets, the virtual meets, virtual students who are doing all, all virtual would all be synchronized and having their lessons at the same time. And we would be videotaping the teacher as well. So if we, the teachers, certain students couldn't attend, we would have that opportunity for them to watch the video as well. Okay. But this does give us opportunities for flexibility too, with teachers who may be having to work remotely and pairing up teachers some, in some of these grades as well. Anything else I'm leaving out on this, Dr. Z?
No, I think we just take everyone here, give a chance to catch a breath, write any questions down, we'll go, we'll be able to refer to the visual. But yes. Write any questions down, we'll go, we'll be able to refer to the visual, uh but yes.
Okay, so this is just another similar visual that really, you know, sort of outlines the two programs. You have the meets, which is just all virtual, and then you have the seats and meets, which is in person. They share teachers, one, the students are, are meeting five days virtually. Um the other, they're meeting two days in person, three days virtually, but they're all getting the same instruction. Um the big difference for meets is that if you want your child to go fall, all five days virtually. We will have a form and virtual where you need to request that your child be there. They will still be um registered in their same school um and still be um part of that school community. Um and, but we will require um a, an official waiver form uh to be filled out virtually uh by parents for each child that wants to have their child go virtual.
Ms. Roca, I also want to emphasize the directive we received from our Board of Education that. Our virtual program will not be, okay, we post something on a board and the child can look at it eleven o'clock at night. It will be synchronized with the other classroom learning. Uh so very, very important that we understand that, it'll be synchronized. Uh you know, obviously, there's always asynchronous learning that is called homework, right? We have it now, in a regular school day, you, there's a blended model where children get homework and they're learning. And it's, they can do homework on their, at their leisure. But the instructional, the direct instruction, either remote or in-person, will be synchronized. And if you go uh virtual, all virtual, that will be synchronized as well. There'll be uh parameters and check-in and attendance, so.
Yeah, that comes, more slides of that too, we can, we can say that many times tonight.
Yeah, I want to say many times because that was a, a directive from our board and rightfully so. Our teachers were terrific in that uh first level pandemic, but we know that one of the, the issues that we received from many families was that. Uh you know, the, some liked the uh asynchronous learning and many wanted the synchronized uh daily schedule.
That's one to see you, Dr. Z.
Okay, so this is a framework, thanks for turning this back over because this is, this is not as good. You can tell this is my slide because I'm not as good with visual slides. But let's start with the grade seven through twelve. If you're in person, seven through twelve, it's your day, you will come to the building, seven through twelve. As we made an effort to two-tier our bussing due to our new organizational structure of K fours and five six. So if we were returning to a regular school day, a regular school year, th- this is anything but regular, it would be. K six under, on one tier and seven, twelve uh in another tier. As you know now, we have three tiers, previous, it was the elementaries K five and then six, seven, eight. Second tier and the third tier, of course, or the first tier was a high school and, and we've versed it. So we're now down to two tiers, that was a uh, one of the benefits of going to this new organizational structure. But grade seven to twelve would arrive in the building uh and start their day, seven forty-five to eleven fifteen. The schedules are being worked out, but go through a regular schedule. Uh those students who are, the, say the gold group who are at home will be checking in and uh Google meeting. With those teachers, even though they're virtual, why the class is going on in the cla-, in the in-person seating. Now, what, what's the one o'clock to two o'clock? Well, eleven fifteen at dismissal, the grab and go lunches. The students are expected to go back home. And between one and two, they'll be all virtual for another subject, everyone. A modified last period to get the subject matter, a direct schedule. So if I am in person, I go at seven forty-five, I go to eleven fifteen, I go, I get driven, uh you know, I get delivered home, whether it's through our buses. Or families, I get back on my computer and I have a class some way with, between the hours of one and two. It won't be an hour class, it may be a forty-five, fifty-minute, and then that's the end of the day for that seven through twelve. If you are the group that's home all day for that virtual hybrid model. You simply go seven forty-five to eleven fifteen, you stay home, you have a lunch break. And then you have one o'clock to two, two o'clock, you join your classmates in a whatever class you were in between one and two. And if you're all virtual all day, you do that same schedule every day, seven forty-five to eleven fifteen, one o'clock to two o'clock. Pre-K to six, now make sure we're not, you hear pre-K, as you know, we had to have partners, and we don't have enough seats for our pre-K grant. To house our wonderful students, so we have partnerships with Lightbridge and Excelero. Uh so that's a separate schedule. They're our students, they're our partners, but we don't control their schedule or uh their um times. So for our preschool, which we moved some students back into our buildings because we have K fours now. And we also have our school in Milltown, our E C C, M B T E C C. Their hours will be eight thirty to twelve. Send home, those who go home will then be responsible between one forty-five and two forty-five. If you're home and it's your day to be home, you will be doing that virtually at home for that whole schedule. If you're all virtual or every day, that's your schedule every day. Um and then I do want to mention district calendar adjustment. You all, the board had approved the calendar, which started uh Professional Development Day, August thirty-first, and School for Students, September one. We have to modify that and change that. Parents will be sent out a modified schedule, the board approves this plan, it is modifying the schedule. I still will, will be talking to uh Ms. Pazner and the, our M B T E A uh Association Group, our administrative group. To get their feedback, but right now, our adjustments to the calendar, it's a must. Our groups, our subcommittees all talked about, we have to front load P D. Whatever platform to make sure our teachers are prepped, teachers understand, meet their needs, because this is a hybrid model. This is new to many of our staffs, and we'll have some time to adjust schedules. Because we don't know the situation of all our staff members as well. So that first week where students were supposed to be in school will not be in school. They start the day after Labor Day, which is Tuesday, September eighth. Again, we will finalize the schedule, we'll get this out to families, but this is a part of our plan to make this work. Um it has to take place in this manner, because it doesn't do us any good to have staff professional, professional del-, development days. Although there's still some on the calendar, to have everything in the middle or the end of the year, it needs to be done that first week as we are changing into a new reality. In these double, dual platforms, and not only dual platforms, being held simultaneous, uh you know, and, and conducted simultaneously. So we're moving, we're getting to the end, folks, thanks for your patience, and then uh we're going to open up for some questions. This initial schedule will be, will be in place for the beginning of school year, will be, continue to be reassessed based on the directives of the State and Health Department. It's being reassessed now. We wish there was one meth- theology and one platform and we would be working to it. We've been moving with a lot of balls in the air, a lot of juggling. Um that hundred and four pages of guidelines that was first sent to schools really was not, nothing definitive in the guidelines. It just said, if maybe feasible, try it, think about it. Um so we, the guidelines now getting a little more tight, and uh we're supposed to receive even further guidelines for remote learning. Uh last week, the governor announced it, he announced that he would have guidelines, we're waiting on them. And, and we know the governor's office has been, you know, working hard, and, and New Jersey's been really showing some positive results, while other states are, are struggling a little bit. We want to make sure that continues to happen, we don't want our children to be data points. We want our children to be safe, good learners, we want our staff to be safe and cooperative, and also uh connected to our s-, uh students and families. The number of families who select remote will change our model, we need your feedback. If you're on, if you're listening, we have millions of viewers listening, please, if you get, you will be getting that simple survey. My child will be complete remote, thank you very much. My child will be in the hybrid model, thank you very much. I already received emails, can I try one, and that, yes, you could definitely change, but we ask you make a commitment for at least a couple of months. You can't change every week, there's no way we can do that. We want to know about bussing, that'll be the other part, that's going out separate, so not to confuse anything. We also have, we're going to be uh working with our staff about returning to school, who can return? We may not have everyone able to return. We may not need everyone to return because we'll have virtual uh needs based on the students, student needs come first. We build everything based on student family needs. Additional schedules will be redeveloped in, in response to changes. And changes to scale, uh schedule may have to be adopted if there's an outbreak. You know, we have to uh hope for the best, but prepare for the worst, if there's some type of outbreak. If you remember, we were one of the first districts, I know people looked at me sideways when we closed nine o'clock at night on March eleventh, Wednesday. There was a announcement that students will not come back. And many of my colleagues and many of families looked at me sideways. But we were given the, a permission, if we were ready to go remote, we can go remote and count it for the hundred eighty days. And I did not want your children to be the data points that we could see how things were going to go. We knew this was going to be a big problem, and so immediately, we made that call. So um we, if we continue, we'll do the same if we have to. We, rerouting on course, so we can reroute, we are ready. We like to call it connection to our community, understanding the consequences and curriculum. Uh we love uh alliterations in uh education. So we like to call that uh seed to the fourth power, right? And uh we want to improve our blended, our goal was to improve that blended learning experience. Because we have to improve remote learning, we know our teacher up to in-person learning. This blended learning and, and remote learning was new to everyone. And we were working it within an, an atmosphere, many of our families were struggling with uh issues and our teachers as well. So we got to continue to be cognizant of those challenges ahead. Um we will set a, a schedule that mirrors a school schedule, not quite, not quite, but it will be synchronized. And participation in all class sessions will be required for students, attendance will be taken. If you're home and you're not in the blue group and gold group is home, you're expected to be in that remote learning. You can't go out to the basketball court and say, I'll do it later tonight, that won't happen, you can't take a job every other day. So remember, education is compulsory between six and sixteen, compensatory between five and eighteen. And for our special groups, three to twenty-one. We want our students back, but we want to do it safely, we want to do it securely, we want to do it uh in connection with our community. So this is uh rerouting, continuing, we will assess our students. We will be providing extra supports and interventions. The staff will continue to receive extra training, why it's so imperative that we start that first week of school with all our staff, five days, full five days. Maybe we'll have a half a day that Friday before Labor Day, but we need to stay focused. And we need to sharpen our saws because this is such a moving target for our staff, it's not fair to our staff. So we will continue to work with training and answer their questions and answer, help them with their needs. Because our staff are the conduit to the learning experience for our students. And staff and parents will provide resource, be provided resources. We will give you access, we're adding on to our platforms, our Google Classroom, this has all been part of. This is nothing new, even without the COVID, this has been all part of our um. So strategic planning, our thought to prepare children for their future, not our past. So we were ahead of the game, looking at how do we make that transition? With that, some other considerations I want to go through, no field trips until further notice, I, I think that's a no-brainer. Um for many, no large groups, that's why we can't have phys ed, we're going to have phys ed, but it's not going to be uh fifty people in a gymnasium. No assemblies, unfortunately, we may have virtual assemblies, but not in-person assemblies. Uh virtual back-to-school evening, we're not going, we love our back-to-school nights, it's our most exciting night of the year. We are in the midst of trying to film our brand-new school, think about it, we built a brand-new school on time, on budget, and we can't show it off just yet. We will show it off, but boy, we wanted to flood that with everybody in there. Pardon the pun about flooding, we did have a drain issue that we worked out, but. Virtual school evenings and pack teacher tech, uh teacher conferences will be planned and conducted. We're going to continue to have security drills, that doesn't take away from our work. Our security personnel, under the direction of our Director, Mr. Miserol. They have been working twelve months during this pandemic, going above and beyond, not only keeping our schools secure in the evenings, during the day. Checking, modifying, but also doing above and beyond work to help us provide for families. No visitors. Of course, there's emergencies, families need to have approvals, but we will not be approving visitors. Uh we, we will keep outside groups until further notice. Uh that kill, our schools, our community schools, our brand-new school was built for a community school, separate entrances. Use, and we're going to use it, but for now, until we get a handle on this insidious virus, we will not have outside groups because we cannot keep up with. Uh the cleaning and the contact tracing, which is the critical piece. If someone gets ill, if someone becomes ill, we can contact trace, we have an obligation to do that. Uh if we bring so many outside groups, it will not, it will be jeopardizing everyone's safety and security and, and wellness. Other, Ms. Roca? L E O, they were part of, Ms. Benson was part of our, our um subcommittees. Childcare is a major issue, L E O is going to have the same challenges. I was talking to other educators, other superintendents, saying that their daycare providers going through some tough challenges. That the costs have gone up significantly. So I, I, I know L E O's going to continue to work, and maybe we could help facilitate partnerships and um, but that's a big consideration. Uh and I don't know how L E O, L E O will be, will make available for L E O. But I don't know how they'll be able to exercise that. L E O has been such a great partner with us, uh helping us have a place for children after school, for their uh parents. Uh for their students, so parents could be rest, could rest assured that there's someone safe, somewhere safe for their children. We have additional support that we're going to investigate from parents. But again, we need parents to tell us who's coming back. And one of the questions is if they need childcare, and we'll be looking for a third-party provider. Remember, the board event has never done childcare, I think for a short time, when it was half-day kindergarten, we, there was a program for childcare, pre. The half-day kindergarten, after half-day kindergarten. Um but when I re- arrived in two thousand and seven, but luckily, the board supported my full-day kindergarten recommendation in two thousand and eight. And we've been having full-day kindergarten and no childcare since that time by the school district. So that's not our business, it's actually a uh separate uh registered certificate. You just can't be a childcare organization, even if you're a school, you still have to apply for that. L E O has that uh provision, that contract, and we will explore our contact with other, if L E O needs help. Uh we'll certainly explore for that major issue of childcare. Some others I want folks to know, announcements going out, I made this announcement this morning. We've been putting off the summer recess, summer recess conditioning is for all sports. But we made an early decision that it was only going to be for fall sports in our band. What does summer recess mean? That's a time period between, after this last spring championship of the state championships. And before the start, the official start of the fall season, they call that fall, I mean, summer recess, where coaches of any sport can meet. Well, we had moved it to August third, we've been working with our medical professionals, uh Ms. Engel, as you met, setting up protocols. Remember, the state has guidelines, no in, can't go inside the buildings, can't have equipment, can't share equipment, can only do ninety minutes a day. And only uh so many minutes per each break, you must have uh one coach, a maximum of ten players. But uh folks, we also monitored the data. Rutgers had an outbreak, Major League Baseball's continued to have an outbreak, they have millions of dollars invested in professionals. Uh this is summer recess conditioning, our coaches will meet virtually, there's no way I can uh put children. And the exuberance and the excitement of putting children together will jeopardize. As you know, it was reported by the mayor, some ba-, there's some tournaments that were taking place, one of the sports, and there was a little bit of an outbreak. Uh uh of the COVID with children. So we will not have August third, the athletic director and, and our principal, we're working with the high school. Uh band and our fall sports that cancel that August third start, which is just this Monday. We tried as hard as we can, we modified the um, the date, and we looked at the data, it just does not seem worth it. And uh it's like a snow day. If I'm going to make a mistake, I want to make a mistake on the side of caution, particularly if it's just simply conditioning that it's voluntary and folks. And, and athletes can do it on their own with the guidelines of coaches virtually. Uh guidelines for our fall sports, what about our fall sports? Well, that was supposed to start August thirteenth, fall sports. August tenth, I should say, canceled and moved to September fourteenth. But again, following the data, Mammoth University joined the Ivy But again, following the data, Monmouth University joined the Ivy Leagues, joining the New Jersey Athletic Conference of Teams, which is College of New Jersey, William Patterson Kane and Montclair State, they canceled their fall sports seasons, or the whole season. I don't think New Jersey is far behind that. It would be surprising. But we are set tentatively to keep working with the state Athletic Association, that's what the NJSEA is, to see, and right now, the earliest we can have fall sports would be September 14th, if there is going to be a season. More to come on that. That's part of that bouncing, fluid change and the bouncing ball. Information is continually changing. We'll update you accordingly. So what happens if? That's, we're probably going to get these questions, so we try to think about some common questions. If an infected person has been in the school building, we will work with the local health officials. We will work with our nursing supervisor and follow CDC guidelines. All students and most staff as recommended from re-entering that building. That initial short-term closure allows time for local health officials to gain a better understanding of the situation. Staff, students and their families are encouraged to continue to follow all the guidance. So the first question I'll bring Ms. Engel on is, the CDC says, not necessarily closing the whole district, but as long as we have a handle. If we don't have a handle on it, you could end up closing the district. Ms. Engel?
So we're working very closely with the local health department and we have developed a protocol of who we will contact. We'll contact the health department immediately for guidance. Again, we will continue to follow the CDC rules and requirements. And really, the most important thing again is that the health and safety of our students and staff are the most critical factor always. So I will always recommend, you know, the safest plan moving forward if we do. Again, I'm going to reemphasize that we are going to do everything we can to mitigate the chances of this by screening staff and students before they come to the school and then screening them as they enter the school. So I'm very hopeful that, you know, we won't run into this. But, you know, again, we will work closely with the health department to make sure that we follow the directives of the CDC and follow the directives of the health department so that we can mitigate the spread if we do encounter it.
And the most important, understand that we have a seamless transition to quarantine and remote learning. We have that platform ready to go. So if we are back in person, this happens, then that group of students will join the all virtual, all remote learning platform.
And there is a new guideline that states that if you are symptomatic, that you must go and have a COVID test. That is one of the new guidelines that just came out that the CDC and the Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health are recommending. So we will be following that closely.
And moving on, we want in-person, we're going to send out upcoming dates, in-person waiver forms, remote learning form, first week of August. The first week of August is unbelievable, folks. It's Monday. So this will be out Monday and we need that form filled out. Choosing the option, asking to commit to remote learning for that extended period of time, which will be written right in the waiver. Transportation waiver, today's July 29th. I watched socially distant groups of people in different buildings get those forms out. And updated district calendar development, details released in August. We're still going to work with our staff. We're going to work with our board of ed. But in this plan, right now, the good news is the four days, five days of training and students start September 8th. Graduation day and the school year will not be changed. Only thing, of those four days, how do we make up the four days without? Right off the bat, we're taking away two snow days. With remote learning, I think we're in pretty good shape that even with snow, we could continue learning. We still will leave one day, just because sometimes the state does funny things and we want to have an emergency day. And that week in November, we'll have two remote days, one on the Monday and one on the election day. Both will be remote, count as part of our 180 days. So those four days will not even impact any of the calendar at the end of the year. Hopefully, we're in for the high school, we're back at Rutgers, we're doing our moving up ceremonies. We're celebrating the first eighth-grade class of our new building, of the new first-year North Brunswick Township Middle School. But we do need to focus on the calendars in the start and our staff would need that week at a minimum, we'll be working over the summer, over the next month, of working with groups of staff of helping us get through these development days and our flex days and our commitment of being ready and making sure that this, both platforms are executed with fidelity and with expertise. So now I'm going to stop. Janet, if you could stop sharing for a minute.
Yes, sir.
I will, before I open up for, and before we go back to the public session on this plan only, I want to open up to board of education members for thoughts, comments, editorials. Your support and your focus on student-staff safety is second to none. I know that because I meet with so many different districts and you certainly, we hopefully, we made you feel connected to a plan that focuses on that and meets the needs and guidelines of the state that's being required. I'll open up to board members first. Before Madam President, we turn it over to you to open up, to do a public session on the reopening plan only. I do not see any board members with questions. As you should know, the board members were a big part of our subcommittee. For those who did not know that, I'm going to share the screen. And Madam President, if you could open up the public session and go through our little requirement of of three minutes, if you want to take number six, public session. Madam President, I know you're there. I see your picture.
Sorry, I was muted.
I know. Perfect.
Good evening, folks. As always, we always want to hear from the public and want to give you the opportunity to comment on the plan and and the expectations that have been presented here tonight. But of course, we want to give as many people as possible a chance to speak. So we ask that you identify yourself as interested in speaking and that you limit your comments to three minutes so that we can accommodate everybody that wants to speak or ask questions tonight.
Ms. Pasner, please unmute yourself, introduce yourself and welcome as the new NJ, MBTEA president.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Beth Pasner, president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. So I wanted to just real quick say to everyone, good evening, good evening, Dr. Zakowski, Mr. Patel, Ms. Hock, the North Brunswick Township Board of Education. I wanted to take this time to introduce myself. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Beth Pasner. I'm the new president of North Brunswick Township Education Association. I look forward to a continued collaboration with you now and in the future. As this pandemic rages on, the MBTEA's concern for the health and safety of the staff and students of North Brunswick is paramount. Based on the data and the recent trends in New Jersey and around the country, we feel that ultimately, the safest place for both staff and students is home with 100% remote learning. That being said, we understand that your hands are tied as you are mandated by the governor to open schools. We, as an association, appreciate the incredible amount of hard work and hours of manpower that has been put into making the reopening of schools as safe as possible. And we also appreciate the collaboration with the association so far to achieve this goal. And we look forward to a continued collaboration with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pasner. Well said, well said. And we know we have our weekly meeting tomorrow, you and I, but we've been collaborating beyond that, as you know. We look forward to talking and bringing the calendar to your attention so we can get it out to the public. But thank you for that. Other comments from the public? I see about 40, we have about 48 participants. And I have to say, I guess they were here for Mr. Patel's HIB report. So, Mr. Patel, I think we probably went away from that too quickly, but.
I usually do draw. Many, many.
I just want to say, not seeing any, I just want, do say that, taking it to the next level with Ms. Passers was talking about, I want to extend my gratitude for the amount of hours and work, collaborative work. That makes it difficult because it's not just locking yourself in a room, it's making yourself available. Our board, our community, our teachers, our staff, not just teachers, because they are so important, our teachers, but our staff, our aides, folks that serve in multiple roles, parent, educator of another district, and of course, part of our community here in North Brunswick. You truly gave a lot to make this, you can see the details, and yet, we're not even done with all of the details. We're now going to work with our principals, who can work with their staff, to get into the nitty-gritty and the granular ways. And yes, the governor still may cancel schools, to Ms. Passers' wish of 100%. We'll be ready for that. We will be ready for that. Our teachers will step up for that. We'll be ready. We were issued a challenge by this board to make sure that if, as we continue to this battle, this remote learning world, that we get better. And I have to tell you, board of ed, I am so encouraged. I am so amazed by how our staff has really stepped it up to the next level. Many of them have emailed me, many of them have been texting me and just simply saying, tell the board of ed, tell the community in your broadcast, we are ready, we're willing, we're able to do what we can to the extent that we can, we're healthy enough to do it for you. So thank you, Ms. Passers. Thank you to all the committee members. Thank you, board of ed. I think all those are watching and waiting. With that, Madam President, seeing though, I think we have to close the public portion. We do have an agenda to get through. Madam President, you're muted.
Mr. Brockman, can you take item number seven, please?
I'm going to get back to the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to put it back on?
Yes, I, sorry. That's my bad, folks. I took it off. Here you go, number seven.
Make a motion to close the public portion on the reopening plan of the meeting.
Second.
Ms. Hock?
Yes, I had to mute myself. Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris? Ms. Keef?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
We've closed the, this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam President, I ask on behalf of the entire committee, our chairperson, Ms. Rumbo, and our subcommittees members, if you would ask someone to do number eight, a motion to accept this plan.
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Legori to do that.
He was a contributing member. Thank you.
With pleasure, Madam President. I move to approve the acceptance and the submission to the New Jersey Department of Education, the reopening plan as presented this evening.
Second.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Keef?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yeah.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The motion passes.
I just want to say, Ms. Sanita, I see that you raised your hand after we closed it. There's still portions where you could come and ask a question about this. So, Sanita Gagne, I hope I said it right. Ms. Sanita, we will let you, there'll be, this was just for this reopening plan, that public portion. We missed your, I see your hand being raised, but we'll have two other sessions for opening item, for public commentary. So please be ready for that. And I'm going to lower your hand now, but you certainly can bring up any question about agenda items, which is going to be the next, once we get to it in about five or 10 minutes. Okay, Madam President?
Yep. Item number nine, Ms. Toth, could you take that, please?
Sure. Motion to approve the following board minutes, regular public Zoom meeting, June 24th, 2020, and executive session, June 24th, 2020.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Ms. Keef.
Thank you. Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Keef?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
We've accepted the meetings, meeting minutes. Thank you. Is Mr. Brooks in today?
No.
No. Okay.
No.
Alrighty. Ms. Rubin, can you take item number 12, please?
Madam President, we have to, we missed it. I know you don't have the agenda. You're doing my screen. Hopefully, it's big enough. We have communications reports and administrative reports.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. So I'm happy, I'm not happy, but we have no communications. But we do have, I have a short administrative report as most of the report was a reopening plan tonight. I do want to make sure that, under my report, that we, I mentioned again, that August 3rd, our planned recess practices for band and recess practice for our fall sports unfortunately have been canceled on August, the August 3rd start date. I do want to report that graduation, although we had a virtual graduation on June 17th, we had a virtual graduation, I mean, an in-person graduation socially distant on Saturday, which was July 25th, was scheduled for July 24th. But of course, the uncertainty of the weather, there were some storms brewing, some rain. I want to thank our custodial maintenance staff for breaking down the field and resetting the football field for the graduation. We did two sessions, about 60 students and families. Each student was only allowed to bring two guests. But, and of course, the change from Friday to a Saturday, we were scheduled to have about 100 in each session and which was within the guidelines allowed by the governor. So we had approximately less, we had approximately 180 folks that attended. 60 students in each of the, of the sessions. And we had limited staff and a few board members. We thank you for attending. But we did not encourage because we could not keep it socially distant if we opened up an entire field. But I just want to report out and thank all of our class of 2020 for their unbelievable versatility, for their resiliency. They really made this difficult, difficult time doable because they're such a special group. So we have one last celebration and I want to thank Mr. Neller and his staff for planning and of course, the maintenance and the custodial staff, security staff. It was hot on that Saturday and think about a turf field, which always worries me with practices. It's like 10 degrees hotter on the turf field because of the synthetic field. It reflects the sun and it was, there was no air in the stadium. So thank you for all those who were able to attend. And lastly, I do want to bring up publicly, I want to thank four of our students who met, wrote up a wonderful letter to me on the basis of equity, the basis of issues that they were concerned about. Our class president of 2019 and three students, three graduates of class of 2020, met with three of our board members, myself, Mr. Neller, our mayor. And they took us through a wonderful outline of how they took surveys, they took time to collect data. They not only issued some eye-opening data, but they had solutions for us. It's easy to outline problems. They said, here's what we would hope to see, here's what some suggestions. They did it maturely, they did it respectively, and they did it in a way that they want to be, they want to ensure sustainability for change in the future. So I just want to report to the community and thank our students. I want their legacy to be the beginning of a sustainable focus on equity. Although we think we focus on equity and we make it part of our core beliefs, we still have to reexamine from the eyes of the most important stakeholder, the students. So if we think we're doing it and in their it, and in their perception, it's not happening, then we need that feedback, so I'm here to say, as speaking with our board president, we're going to be setting up a district, uh, equity task force, that requires all schools to report out to the board once a month in our Student Services Committee, so, it stays with us, it's not after problems that we become reactive, we stay proactive, that their school-level equity teams, made up of stakeholders, including students, are able to report out on their experiences and perceptions and issues, and then the board will hear those reports on a monthly basis, because many people will know, our board works on committee structure, and we have seven standing committees, one of which is a Student Services Committee, and we meet once a month, and so, we will make that part of our District Equity Task Force report, and continue to do that work, so we can sustain our efforts to make sure the feedback, every educator knows, who's in this audience, knows the critical piece of teaching is gaining feedback from the end user, if you're teaching reading and writing workshop, it's the conferring part, that feedback, so you get individualized, and you can learn about that individual student, what we want to learn from our students, we want that feedback, so we can improve our, uh, work, and so we can improve the experiences for all students, so, I just want to say that publicly again, um, to all, that is our commitment, and is our commitment to get that feedback and continue the feedback, so we can get better. With that, Madam President, concludes my administrative report, again, I just can't thank our Return to School Committee for all their work, their time and effort to get, um, as part of this, uh, district-wide initiative.
Thank you. Any committee reports this evening?
Yes, Madam President, uh, the Personnel Committee met on, um, last Monday night, in my absence, Ms. Keefe did take notes, so I will be sharing those notes, um, the committee discussed retirements, resignations, as well as the impact of the reduction in state aid, as we know, on our budget, and then other personal matters.
Uh, Ms. Rubin, uh, we, can I be the first to publicly, in front of millions of viewers, congratulate you on your recent engagement?
Sure, thank you.
So, congratulations.
Thanks.
And certainly, you did, you, you were not there at the meeting, but we talked probably more than the meeting took place on, on that evening, and so, thank you for being up to speed and reporting out, and thank you to Ms. Keefe for getting, taking the notes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Rubin is always is an overachiever, um, she managed to not only get, uh, get a ring, uh, but she also received the promotion to Director of Human Resources at her company, so congratulations on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Ms. Rubin?
Thank you, I appreciate the, uh, the acknowledgement, thank you.
Now, millions of people do know that now, I just wanted to...
I know, I was trying to blush it.
Awesome. Um, alright, so...
Madam President, I also have a commu, uh, committee report for Community Relations.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, so, our meeting, what, for Community Relations, was on Wednesday, the 8th of July, um, all board members in the committee were in attendance, um, we talked a bit about the virtual, uh, video tour, which is being taped in the next couple of days for our new middle school, so everyone will be able to see that, um, some of the board members will be starring in that video, and we will give everyone a virtual tour, um, of the building, so look out for that in the next couple of weeks, of course, we talked about the reopening plans, which of course, Dr. Z, um, and some of the other cabinet, cabinet members spoke about, um, the one thing which is super important to complete is, and we talked about the, uh, initial results on the 8th, at that point, we had 1,800 responses from our parents, please complete that survey, it's going to be so helpful, um, in the steps moving forward, so we were able to get some of the logistics into that, um, Dr. Z also mentioned his Brunswick's meeting to us, that he was meeting with, um, of course, our district, New Brunswick, South Brunswick, and East Brunswick, to definitely bring a sense of, uh, working together and building a Brunswick mentality, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, the Student Services Committee met on, um, July 13th, Monday, July 13th, um, most of which, that information, that was two weeks ago, is probably updated in almost all the slides that Dr. Z did today, which was the transportation issues we discussed, we also discussed, um, you know, digital learning, um, the one thing that wasn't discussed in that slideshow was this year's ESY program, which, you know, at this point is about 80% complete, but was about the halfway mark two weeks ago, when we were there, um, the efforts were a little bit different than previous years, but, um, uh, Mr. Harry seemed to indicate that everything was going as successful as possible, there were some hiccups, as you could imagine, but some of them were not, um, due to us, some parents, you know, um, with special, special education needs, weren't, you know, weren't taking the services or weren't ready for the services, so that type of stuff is going on, but other than that, there was a successful ESY program going this summer, a little bit different than previous years, but it, it was taking place, um, and then, you know, everything that we heard in the report tonight. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brockman, I think Ms., Ms. Gonzalez has stepped away, uh, now, that's a, other reports?
The Negotiations Committee, Dr. Z met on July 8th, um, at that time, we discussed the reopening plans and the contracts with our various unions, um, and other confidential matters.
Thank you, Ms. Keefe.
Madam President, Dr. Zakowski, I do have Business Operations Committee reports, plural, um, in the past month, we met on July 8th, and then we met again this evening, from July 8th, really quick, we discussed, uh, phase one of, uh, well, the new school, we, we talked about how most of our furniture has been delivered, we're putting our desks together, we're slowly and methodically getting ready to open, um, phase one at Linwood is on schedule with no issues, we are progressing satisfactorily, phase two was going out to bid on July 7th, and the bid opening was on, uh, July 28th, which we discussed in this evening's meeting, which I'll get to in just a minute, uh, we anticipate that the phase two will be completed in approximately the time range of around April or May of 2021. At, uh, the first meeting on July 8th, we, we were given a budget update, that there was no budget update at that time, um, we said that we'd discuss it again on the 29th, and we were given an update on facilities in general, um, Mr. Carroll informed us that the PSENG work for the ESIP project was completed at Linwood and the elementary schools, uh, there are discussions were ongoing with solar at the high school, we're, uh, still receiving proposals, uh, for transformers, and in terms of the middle school, we were moving teaching materials from Linwood over, uh, to the middle school, at that point, we had also discussed, um, the reopening plans, as we've heard this evening, we had gotten, um, many responses at that point already. This evening, we picked up where we left off, um, in terms of the phase two bid for Linwood, the low bid was, uh, happy to report on budget, um, it will be with McCauley Corp, uh, construction, there's an addendum on tonight's agenda, uh, to approve, as it seems as if, uh, all is in order. Uh, the Linwood Phase One project is continuing on schedule, steel is done, the rooms are taking shape very nicely, uh, we did discuss at, uh, the new middle school, that there was a repair that needed to be made to a drain, um, there was a crust drain that was located under the front entrance pavers, uh, which caused a bit of flooding in our main entrance area, it's, it's been repaired, it continues to be repaired, and a report will be forthcoming. We discussed, uh, the non-public transportation issues that Dr. Zakowski alluded to in his presentation this evening, um, and those pub, non-public schools are alerting their parents that Aiden Lou may be the only choice for this year, um, we discussed the fiscal 21 budget and those adjustments that have been made, um, we were informed that any adjustments must come from the expense side, we think we have a path to get there, and that will be need, uh, that will need to be submitted to the county by the middle of August, and that will be on our August agenda for final approval, and then finally, this evening's agenda will include an item pertaining to Alyssa's law, which has to do with silent panic alarms for emergencies, notifications, strobe lights, and items like that, and we're submitting, uh, I believe in those $320,000, where the max allowable for us would have been $332,000, that would conclude, uh, the reports for the month.
And, and Mr. Legori, just, the Alyssa law, um, it's all refundable, it's part of a grant, so we have to submit the application, so I just want the taxpayers to know that we are doing all this updating requirement of Alyssa Law warning, all through a grant, as provided by the Department of Ed, so, uh, it doesn't have any budgetary impact.
Thank you.
Madam President, I think we have all our committees, um, complete.
Very well, then in that case, um, can somebody make a motion to approve?
Some of...
Second.
Ms. Rubin and Mr. Legori, Ms. Hock?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brockman?
Mr. Brockman, we need you to unmute yourself, Mr. Brockman.
Sorry, yes.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Duran Harris? Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The reports are accepted.
Thank you.
Madam President, we have a review of the agenda, do you want me to, um, go through the scrolling as we review the agenda? Before we do?
That would be lovely.
I will do that, we'll start with page three. I wish everyone to know, the board has received this, and we just do this before we do a public consent in here, take any questions on agenda items only, so as you can see, board members, please stop me as I keep moving. There's a lot of our grant numbers, we have to have approved, Mr. Raffano takes care of that, to the petney, uh...
Uh, Ms. Rumbo, Ms., Ms. Rumbo takes care of it.
Did I say that?
Yes, you said Raffano.
Did I say Raffano? I meant Ms. Rumbo, I'm sorry, wrong Amy, sorry, Ms. Rumbo.
It's okay.
This is a report that Mr. Patella gave on my behalf, so I will zoom through that quickly, our bills list, our supplies, you know, we do it through a cooperative... This is still the resolution about the lease. Here's our Alyssa laws, we add up to two numbers, about 324, and chain 324,000, all of which reimbursable. Our policies tonight, as you can see, we have a first reading, our transportation contract item, and then, we keep going.
The addendum, yep.
And then I want to keep going, and then here's the addendum that Mr. Legori mentioned in his report, that's been added, this is about the low bidder for the phase two, Linwood, as you know, the new school, and Linwood Construction was broken up into new school project, Linwood Project Number One, getting the fifth and sixth grade classrooms ready, and, uh, Project Number Two, creating the preschool and moving the board offices, and moving, uh, re, um, reorganizing Linwood further with a new parking lot as phase two, and this is the bid that came in, we're happy to report that our McCauley is a reputable company, and under our budget items, that a budgeted, uh, bid threshold, and that we're happy that the board will be accepting this, and we can continue to move forward with our progress. So with that, seeing no, no questions, Madam President, I will bring it back to... I'll bring it back to where we left off, and now we need to open up the agenda before we have a consent agenda, for agenda items only, I know I had one of our viewers or one of our participants, I don't know if she's still with us, she had her hand up prior, I'm looking for her, I don't see her, oh yeah, Ms. Sanita, did you have any questions? Or, we're open in public session, Madam President, do you want to give the three-minute, uh, speech as part of our, uh, board bylaws?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, we welcome you to, uh, step forward, uh, virtually, and, uh, ask your, the question or make your comment, we ask that you keep that to three minutes in order to give others an opportunity to speak, and, um, please make sure to introduce yourself, let us know who you are and what your interest is in the school district.
For anybody who's new to us, yes, Ms. Sanita, yes, Ms. Sanita, you're on, I have to...
Are, are you guys able to hear me?
Oh, yes, okay, Mr. Sanita.
But, um, my name is Sunil Khupchandani, and I have two daughters who are in the North Brunswick, uh, education system, one is a senior in high, in high school, and another one is going to be in the eighth grade, uh, the question which I have is, we, uh, in the plan, we have mentioned that the temperature would be taken, and when the kids are heading out of the home, and when they're in the school, but, there are certain houses which are not functionally ready to have a infected person completely isolated, so in that scenario, how are we going to ensure that, are there going to be any facilities available for isolation, or what kind of arrangement should be done, because right now, given the structure of my own home, if I see it, I don't see that isolation would be ever feasible, so I have to always select a virtual option, I cannot select even a hybrid option in that.
Ms. Engel, do you want to, uh, work with, and I hope I pronounced your name right, Ms. Gianni, Mr. Gianni?
Yep.
Okay, that's close, not bad.
These are really important questions, and it really is complicated to try to work out a plan that works on, you know, with families that have many different living situations, so what I'd like to do is invite, uh, to speak to you, I can call you tomorrow, we could have a conversation, and maybe I could help problem solve and help you work through a, a process, that if you are required to, uh, quarantine or isolate one or more members of the family in your home, I could assist you with, uh, with that, uh, and that's one, one of the things that we do, the school nurses have been doing through our virtual health office, if families have questions, we work through, uh, the, the guidelines and try to develop plans, so that, uh, we can meet the requirements and make sure that everyone in your family is safe, so, um, tomorrow, if you want to, um, you want to reach out to me by email, mangle@nbt schools.org, and send me your information.
Ms. Engel, can you put it in the chat?
Sure.
So this way, Ms. Gianni, you could see it in the chat, make sure we connect, um, and further to that point, isolation, we have many of our principals on here tonight, I see them here, they're going to start looking at physical space, you know, we have so many issues and details that we got to drill down, uh, but that is a big concern, it's a great question, thank you, Ms. Engel, if you could put it in the chat room, for those who are not Zoomers, look in the chat room, Ms. Engel will have her email, she certainly does not make that private, she's been 24/7 since the COVID answering emails, because I send it sometimes 3:00 in the morning just to see if she answers, and typically, within a half hour, she answers.
Uh, I would like to take this opportunity and thank you guys for taking the question, and, uh, thank you to the entire community, uh, Board of Education Office, so far, we have been doing pretty good, and it has been a very good collaborated effort to take the kids to the next level, it's a new normal, we are taking this collaboration as a parent also, and from the Education Department, we have been getting a very good help, thank you very much, guys.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here, and, and really, the thanks goes to the professionals that I have been pleasure working with, and a, a board that's been so... and a board that's been so supportive of our work. So thank you for your comments. Any other questions? I have the board here. I'm looking at my board. I see a lot of names I recognize. I don't see any virtual hands or even any waving hands. So we'll have another, we'll have another opportunity for a public session because for those who are keeping score, what's, why do we do multiple public sessions? Because the board's about to do a consent agenda and voting on all items on the agenda. Well, in order to do that, we want to give the community or anybody participating in our board member, a board meeting, a chance to make a comment before the board votes on it. So board, Madam President, we have to go to number 15, seeing no other questions. We'll have one more public session, but for just the agenda items, we have to go to number 15.
But I can't see.
You can't see it because Dr. Zoom did not do his job by going back. Here we go. Okay. Number 15.
So may I have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Mr. Legori.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Uh-oh. Mr. Duran Harris?
Mr. Duran Harris?
He said yes.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Keefe.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Ms. Rubin.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
We've closed this portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we need number 16.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items: Personnel, Curriculum, Miscellaneous, Finance, Items 1 through 4, Policy and Transportation.
And may I add, Ms. Rubin, for the, please add to your motion the addendum.
And the addendum.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Brockman.
Mr. B, you're muted.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Duran Harris. Ms. Keefe.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Ms. Rubin.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
All the motions pass.
So I'm going to slide this down a little bit.
That was a lot bit.
Yeah, I know it's a lot. So now we pass all that. Let me get to, before we go into closed session, as we do have items related to negotiations and we're going to have an issue, I believe Mr. Patella has a matters of reporting him. We do have number 17. I know it seems silly, but now we will take any questions from the public. Ms. Gonzalez, you can let the public know our standard bylaw is always good to be repetitive.
Absolutely. So for this session, we will accept questions on any matter, but we still ask that you keep your questions or comments to three minutes in order to accommodate everybody that wants to speak with or hear from the board.
I do have a question from Wesley Bailey. I see they sent me a chat. Is that Mr. Bailey?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I had a question. If I have a high school child and I have a grade school child in Parson, is there any way that I can coordinate so that they both are doing the hybrid where they're both in or both in gold? Because otherwise I'd have a child, a grade school child home two days, and I'd have the high school kid that would probably be looking after them if I had to work.
Mr. Bailey, can I thank you, and I didn't have to pay you to be that great question. I forgot to bring up that point. That's a great point, great question. The answer is an absolute yes. We are going to be in the business of coordinating that. I should have said that earlier. I'm going to blame Ms. Sharoka for not reminding me. Now, it's, I forgot to bring that point up. That's a great question. That's a real question. And families, to Mr. Bailey's point, when he was asking, if you have students in different schools, will we coordinate? Yes, we will coordinate. We'll coordinate as best, not as best we can. We will coordinate. We're not going to ask family members to, we don't expect family members, like Mr. Bailey said, have different schedules. Many times they have to be connected. So yes, Mr. Bailey.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work you all are doing. Thank you very much.
And thank you for that question. I didn't have to pay you for it because you remind me. That was great setup, perfect.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
I'm looking. Many familiar faces. Madam President, I don't see any virtual or real hands waving. Back to the agenda. Oh, I do have a question. Hold on. We do have one, just in time. Oh, this was a private one, so I can't answer that question. So we need to have a motion to close the public portion.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Tracy.
And Ms. Toth was second. Thank you. Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Keefe.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Ms. Rubin.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
The session is closed.
Thank you.
Madam President, we have 18. So just for clarity to everyone, we will be going to closed session, yet Ms. Rumbo will hold this session open. It will, it'll be a screen saying that we're going back to closed session and coming back into open session. So our board members, they have an executive session link that they'll go to and will come back to open session. So Madam President, we do need to have a motion to go into closed session as per number 18.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Second.
That's fine. Mr. Brockman, yep.
Yes.
So hold on.
You have to read the.
Motion second, I have a discussion point. Can we add to the motion to go in closed session? Him matters. Him report. So we have two set, one not only for negotiations, but matters for him.
Just confirm that, if you don't mind, just, Madam President, just confirm, who made the motion the second?
Ms. Keefe.
Ms. Keefe, is that, is that what you?
No, that was the first.
I made the first motion.
And then Mr. Brockman. And Mr. Brockman.
Okay, I just want to make sure both of you agreed to include that in your motion and second.
Confirmed.
Confirmed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we need a roll call.
Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Keefe.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Ms. Rubin.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
We can go into closed session.
Again, Ms. Rumbo will hold the meeting open with Mr. Toro. We are going to go into closed session and come back to officially close the meeting. I do not believe there's any reporting out after that, but we will be in closed session for a few minutes. Thank you, all those. If we don't see you when we come back, we appreciate everyone being on, and we'll see everyone soon if they're coming back, if they're back when we get back. Uh, we appreciate everyone being on, and we'll see everyone soon if they're, uh, coming back, if they're back when we get back. So with our agenda, all we have is one closed session item that we have to bring forward was the monthly acceptance of the HIB report. I believe that's the only matter, a matter that we need to vote publicly, and with that, I know it's, um, I'll turn it back over to you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report due July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Ms., Ms. Hawk, what happened? You're muted.
Sorry. Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Duran Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't think we ever opened up the session, did we? Need to have a motion to open first, Dr. Zakowski, before the-
Yeah, you could have-
Yes. I, I, in my exuberance, to get back to our millions of viewers, we needed a motion to open up. Mr. Patel-
Not a capital error that you guys should do that.
So for the record, did we have a first, a motion, and a second to reopen to the public portion of the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Yes. Who was second, I'm sorry?
Ms. Toth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris?
Yeah.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Talk about a motion that they couldn't say no to, for God's sakes. Can you imagine if they voted no not to open up? Then we're in a really big problem.
All right, and so the motion passed for the HIB report. Correct?
Yes, the motion passed.
Yep, got it. And now we need a motion to adjourn.
Before we do, before we do that, hold on, before we do that. Um, Madam President, board members, just thank you for tonight. Is there anything you want to bring publicly again, uh, out as we're in, uh, open session? I, I do want to thank all board members, especially those who were part of the subcommittees, and, um, we do appreciate all the work, and I, I have to say it publicly again, the cabinet, Ms. Rumbo, Ms. Shiroka, for, uh, mounds and mounds of information.
Stangles.
So putting it all together, I thought the, uh, presentation was a good visual. We're gonna, we're gonna de, drill down even deeper as we get to our principles, but again, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, and now we can, uh, if there's no questions or comments further, we then could get, uh, we could then have a motion to close.
Mr. Duran?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You gotta-
Uh, Mr. Brockman?
We, you gotta chat up there.
Oh, again, chat?
It just came up. It's just, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I do see a chat. Ms. Conover.
Hold on, we have a motion.
I didn't have a Zoom link early, only-
Well, well, it's not-
Wait, wait, we have a motion and a second, right, on the table?
No, hold on, you're right. Yes, we do.
Hold on, Mr. Bush, if we take the motion and second, vote on it, then the meeting's closed.
No, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, they should be withdrawn, so that you can answer that question.
Right, okay, thank you.
Who's motion is it?
Mr. Duran Harris.
I said, Mr. Duran Harris, do you withdraw your motion?
I do, confirm.
Okay, go ahead, Doc.
So I have a question for Ms. Conover. Hi, Ms. Conover, we had three public sessions. Mr. Bush, am I allowed to open up to a public question now?
It's, it, it's all within your discretion.
Okay, well, I would then check, turn it over to the board, if the board's okay with it.
Yeah.
We certainly want to answer this question.
Especially under the circumstances, I mean, I don't, we like to, we know, obviously, we like to have a, an organized meeting, but I think it's fair to say that people are still unfamiliar with the fourth.
Yes, and tha, and thank you, Mr. Bush, for that, uh, empathy, because Ms. Conover has a great question. She didn't have a Zoom link early, just a YouTube. What is the status of dual language, per, a dual language program? I have a son entering the first grade at Parsons. That's the first question. Two, what happens if parent work schedule conflict with school sessions? Ooh. Um, we're gonna try to do, I'll, I'll answer number one, or if anybody wants to help me, Ms. Rumbo. Our dual language program is still on course.
Yes.
It'll be a modify like any other program, so yes, we'll have the dual language program in school, uh, hybrid model, and then virtual, but it'll be, we use two teachers anyway, we pair two teachers, Spanish and English anyway, for the dual language. So that will be maintained. As far as the second question, if your work schedule conflicts with school session, we do not have, because we can't provide, at the same time, we do not, we're not able to provide, um-
Childcare.
Uh, childcare, but we're going to be looking at companies, third parties, and our township to see if they can help us with that, uh, area. So, well, more to come on that, I do not have the answer about your work conflict. Obviously, we know it's a serious situation, but we'll do all we can, um, Ms. Conover, to help facilitate, uh, areas where you could get childcare. Thank you so much for extra time, oh, absolutely, we look forward to having you, thank you for your questions. And I want to thank Mr. Bush, he's usually a legally stickler. He's so empathetic tonight, I think he, as the mayor, he's shown such great growth for his empathy and sympathy and leadership. So thank you, Ms. Conover, and thank you, Mr. Bush. With that, Madam President, I see no more questions. I think we can ask for a motion and a second for, uh, to close the meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, Tracy.